We'll call this meeting later. Work session, now in city council, twenty first, twenty twenty five, three five P M. Well, going to the legions, that was called whole please.
Mayor DeLong?
Hi there.
Councilmember Randall?
Present.
Councilmember Aldous?
Here.
And Brian?
Here.
Councilmember Flatball?
Present.
Deputy Attorney Johnson?
Here.
And your city administrator for the Roll Call Station.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian. There are no addenda, how we can mostly approve the agenda.
Second?
Most councilmember Brian, second councilmember Randall. Put the agenda up, presenting, all those in favor, please, if I'm saying aye.
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 Those, most of you here. All right, we got, uh, grills for the park. No information of this one yet?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Randall.
Based on our, uh, capital improvement meeting, uh, the issue of wells for the park, which is, and so, like, I think on Thursday, yesterday, um, we contacted a couple different businesses to get this, uh, for both grills, uh, for the Nowland Park, which is two of them, and then ten of them, that would be the night's part. And then also included in, in our request was, um, the hot ash bins. So when they clean the grills, the ashes go into the bins rather than out. So it's a little discombobulating because we got information at different times. We have bins for both metal and concrete ash bins. Staff, uh, public works staff, who first, concrete bins, because one is they are less likely to definitely lock up on yourself, on itself. Uh, there shouldn't be any need to split them, other than if they look good feeding. Um, they can just sit on the ground, there's minimal preparation of the ground for them to sit on. The metal, um, is susceptible to theft, because it's metal, and strabbles. The metal bins need to be anchored into a concrete pad, so there's an initial cost of leveling the area, making the pad, pouring it, commissioning it, taking the forms off. Uh, and then still mounting the, the bin to the pad. So the preference, and I want to take a minute, especially the preference, is that we go with the, um, concrete ash bins, with total of twelve of them, and then two at Nowland Park, and two at the recycle, at, uh,
Twin Lakes.
Thank you. Um, so in the packet is a bid from the Elson Outdoors. And the total, or twelve concrete hot ash receptacles, is nine thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. That includes shipping, there's no tax, because we're a city, and it's on state contract. No, excuse me, on state contract. Then the next piece, there's a picture of them, you can just kind of start collecting it, like some of our other stuff. The next piece is, it's every request on the hot ash piece.
I, um, so where had hot ash before?
We have little containers, like little buckets, metal buckets, that are connected to the grill that it disconnected and walked away, so.
So.
This is something new.
I know we had two, yeah, at Memorial Park, where we would tend to be down at Twin Lakes.
I don't know, okay, we're all, they have it from once in a, you know, at Memorial Park.
I mean, even, even the grills, how many, how many grills have we had in the past? I know the line got cut off here, because it was rusted.
But what we are bidding is to replace what was there now.
We have ten grills now that.
Yeah, I did speak with Eric, and he said that, actually, when we got that part from the county, there were many more that they have disappeared and they've not been replaced. And, and overall replacement is based on, Eric, and this is jumping to grills, but, is based on Eric and public works trying to fix what was there. So, so the large hot ash containing was given a little thing with the last. And that was what goes with the metal buckets. Um, Mr. Mayor?
I'm glad one.
Is there an issue, uh, when I was looking at the ones, um, the concrete ones, which I think are great, how do we, how do we keep people from killing their own? So in the top of it, it's not real visible in it, but in the top of it, it's metal grate. And that metal grate is the size, the openings are about the size of a briquet unmerked, a fresh briquet, so it's pretty small, so it should, I mean, somebody wants to, they can, you know, also strans them. But it's, it's made, that's just the question.
How do we get the app from, uh, grill for the answer?
The, we, we have two options, and we're, we're gonna go with, um, you can have, you can buy metal cans to go inside of them, or you can just let the metal, the, the ash fall, and then we'll sweep it out, open up the back of the door, and they scoop it into a container, they'll go around to each one and get ash from. In other words, we have.
The second question was how from the grill to the ash.
We had that, it comes with shaking out the shovel.
I think that's.
Yeah, what you meant, Jason.
Yeah, it's a shovel.
You have the shovel. Yeah, well, very possible. I believe a lot of it, the public works, when they go over daily to clean up the gardens, they also give a rules that were left. I know what kind of brought up some of this, is that we've had residents tell me, when they're making a renovation, to make sure that there's gonna be grills available, because some of them have been bent over, some of them have been cut off. And now one of the suggestions we had too, is maybe, um, concrete, uh, what's that, floor, concrete floor. The whole, the grill ran into it, so they can't, I just can't, it might be much more difficult to do it with the concrete.
Well, if you want, you have that part, like, said, it goes with the, it's called next, if anyone that our apartment, I see, is cleaning it, or not cleaning.
Yes.
I, I don't know anybody who cleans a grill after, I'm, I'm gonna ask.
I remember, yeah. I mean, but we will talk to them.
Got a couple of technical questions to talk to.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Brian, question for councilmember Randall, can I just, for all your clarification, which estimate are we looking at?
Okay, right, no, right now, we are looking at the Monty Wilson, which just has this one, and it just has the hot ash container. It would have been a hundred pieces.
The one was on your table. They literally just came in.
Other manufacturer that we spoke with doesn't do the concrete ash.
So the one in the picture in our packet? Who is that?
That is Bill's.
Nelson.
Well, this is the Bill's.
Yeah, this is the Bill's, or just.
Just for interviews. So now I start first part, put it together, she gathered some information, and then we had issues. So some of what's in there, we use as a reference, so like, cut some of the black and white pictures as a reference, like the northern, like, picture, there's.
So, so let me ask this, if I can, in Memorial Park, our grills weren't near each other. We, we had six hundred and seventy dollars a piece, and our maintenance workers are always cleaning the grills, so we need one for each.
That's up to council decide, we just did it as replacement for each grill. If the council chooses to do something different, that's with the council chief.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Brian, so I also heard that you'd have to put these, embed these into concrete?
If we were to go with the metal ones, we would, but these.
We just have Nelson in same foot.
The concrete ones just set on the ground. If we went with the metal ones, then that would have to be mounted on.
In order to have ash containers too, or just grills?
They don't, they didn't have the concrete.
Believe it's just.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Flatball?
Scott, how close are the grills in Memorial Park?
You don't know. I was gonna ask the same thing, but we're in Memorial Park, you know. Again, if our staff is going emptying the ash, which may still be hot, how close are they to, I mean, I'm saying six hundred and seventy bucks for one for each grill? If the grills are approximate to each, I would say. We need twelve of them.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Randall.
It's up to the side, so I, we don't have a map that shows the location of them, so it's hard to determine that. I guess I would ask, if also is, um, accepting of the, the, starting with the concrete ash box, is that we, we approve up to twelve, and then we can have a conversation with public works staff, as to how that can go down, like, with some one in Memorial Park, a couple of the shoppers are close to each other, and we can go down these on, on that, uh, unless that has additional connections. I don't, just that when we asked Scott and Eric, how many did we need, how many were bad? This is not what they gave us.
And I'm assuming the urgency is because of lead time on the product?
Yes. Yes. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Flatball?
Natalie, we said you asked them, so there were ash containers, I thought you didn't have them.
No, those, those were stolen, but we looked at from northern, were just little buckets, and they're like, if we buy these, it's just a waste of money, they'll be stolen. And he said, can you see if you can find something else, or don't do ash containers? So this was how we kind of came up with it, so that if people did come, they, you know, if they came prepared, they could shovel it away, so that you can do it, but the intent was, is to have one grill close to each of the pavilions, some of the picking tables that are not covered, just so that if it's a busy day, a busy Saturday, then anybody who wants a grill, I don't use it, you don't have to go into somebody else's area. And that's the number that they gave us, of the number of grills. Okay, so that's a number of ash, the number of grill.
Councilmember Randall?
But did it, did they not say one ash bin for grill? Correct. I guess I would, want, like, again, kind of piece start this, um, if council, if there aren't any other questions? Are there any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Brian. So, so if we're emptying these right now, what, is it, where are we putting this up? Are we assuming it's full, and where, what are we putting in, putting it into now, and are we going to need a bigger container if we have more of these things? If they're not gonna be done every week?
I can't answer that.
I, I don't know who's cleaning it right now, councilmember Brian, I don't know many are left, don't know any locator. Um, I'm assuming there's, again, it's an assumption, but there's something with each pavilion. Do we have now, in Twin Lakes, we have a big pavilion, awful pavilion, disco pavilion. I don't know where the other nine. Councilmember Flatball?
Um, councilmember Randall, um, I was the one, I was in the office, and someone's been complaining, I think they complained about the grills, and, um, they, they hidden, said that some were chewed over, that some were rusted out, and so that's when Scott sent, um, the guys out to check on everything. So that's actually what was wrong, and that's when you, I said, um, actually needed help.
My question's not about the grill itself, Andrew, are we gonna, do we need a separate container to take the ash out of these, these ash containers, to safely put it into something else, or if the city is now gonna be responsible, would be responsible for emptying these? Because who knows what's gonna be in there? And is that something else that we're going to have to get?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Randall?
To councilmember Brian, I, I believe staff, public works has a container that they currently use to put the ash that's there into. So I don't believe we would have to buy anything additional. They would empty from these containers into that container, and take it and dispose of it in whatever fashion it's disposed of now. Mr. Mayor?
Scott, do you know how they're disposing it now?
Uh, they're bringing it back, and, and I'd have to ask them exactly how they're getting it, or they're gonna get it back here, or they're bringing it back here, just like they do, if they got the grills while they're, um, on the same rotation as they, they take the garbage and. So, just a couple things, when, when the mayor's asking for how many do we have, there were times that some of the larger pavilions that we had, had more than one grill, we had more. So, when I asked the guys to do an inventory of what we needed, to councilmember Randall's point, that is what they came back with, as far as the number, as far as the ash cleanup goes, we're trying to encourage people to be able to clean up after themselves if they're doing it, with the long weekend coming up here, the guys aren't gonna be out cleaning ashes on Memorial Day weekend, so if somebody's out there garbicking, would they be able to clean up after themselves, for example? Uh, then the, the next person would be able to use that the next day. So if you don't have anywhere for them to put their ashes, you can imagine where the ashes are, they ended up in between the guys going to be cleaning the grills. So, having a container for them to deal, and whatever that number is that you guys want to get to, and we can go back, and we can map it out if you want to, but, um, this is, came to my attention about two weeks ago, as residents were coming in and talking about it, and, uh, it just wasn't on my radar, I just haven't been out inspecting grills. So, when I sent the guys out saying, what do we need, that's why the recommendation was the two covered ones from Memorial Park, and they talked about, uh, channel at Twin Lakes, I guess I didn't challenge them, they're replacing grills, or, I know on a couple, we talked about possibly putting two grills in some of the large pavilion, like we've had in the past, so one person could be grown. As far as, I thought it was a good idea to take a look at, what can we do with the ashes and all that, and can we encourage people to be able to clean up after, so the next person has cleaning your own instead of cleaning up, like, this makes sense. No, no, I'm not saying you're, I'm just saying that's kind of how we got marching down this, we've had cans, now cans are before with lids on it, that were cabled to the post, that were gone before we knew it, not against opponent, the, the guys weren't against your opponent, or doing something like that. Pouring slaps to be able to bowl down the lighter than metal one? To me, probably isn't the way we go either, so our option then, then, councilmember, do you feel, for us, which was, I thought a lot of us, having one of these, seven places, and do this, if you don't want every, want every spot, then how do you go from one pavilion to the next, or wherever you have, and how you bring your ashes over, if you're a resident using or anybody using the grill, I don't know how you would take it from, or maybe it wouldn't be, if they're gonna clean up after this.
No, I mean.
That's why it came, grill, we hope ash and everything after.
Right, well, we still have that, it's how, I mean, I, I, how are you gonna get the hot ash out of the grill? If there's no scoops.
Oh, I think, the talk, I was, we were in, right, so.
Yeah. How much are they, are they gonna work?
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Natalie, any question?
Yeah, my question is for, from Randall, uh, if the ashes brought back, getting dumped on people's gardens, as I was told that it was composting stuff, does that help our recycle brand?
I have a, that's on my list to, um, ask.
So before the residents complained, and you said anything about?
Um, when I asked them about it, they were aware of that, or, but never that brought to my attention.
Um, yeah, I don't know if you remember the old cans we used to have here at Memorial Park, the blue.
And then I identified the aluminum trash can.
So he's probably got in the dorm room somewhere. So, we know on the Nelson, the stone one, how you get the can full of ashes out, and obviously on the metal one, you open up, try to pull out.
On both, both of them, we have a metal door that you open and scoop out.
And so they, they'll have a can in there similar to the?
We are not buying cans, go in them, they are another, well, like eighty-nine dollars a piece, so. We chose just to go with the door, you open the door, and sweep it out, and if they're there in any regular fashion, it won't be full, so, you know, we just sweep all of it into a container, and bring that to wherever it is, or externally, we'll send that to. Are there any additional questions?
So, twelve, up to twelve, green cast concrete, black grade, real bright sand, ten, six hundred and seven each, two thousand forty dollars, chip eight, thirteen hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. Grand total ninety-four twenty-two three five. We're talking about up to twelve, the Nelson concrete.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Randall?
Yes, I would, you know, that council, the, the purchase of up to twelve, hot ash receptacles from Nelson Outdoors, for, I'm gonna say for a not too exceeded ninety-six hundred dollars, this is, this is an increase, the permit is ninety-four twenty-two point two, or three five, with the stipulation that the city administrator will go back to public works to say, do they think we can not go down to one in Nowland Park? And what are their thoughts of going down based on the location of the existing grills in the month?
Motion to second any other discussion, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian, one last question, could this be considered a cap, a park inclusion?
Yep, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Randall?
Yes, it'll come out of the cap. So, it's a long-term investment, unless it gets stolen, it's meant to be a long-term investment, uh, infrastructure, obviously.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember all? Certainly will set.
Yes, and, and just to keep it easier.
What I followed with is, is if we will be unable to, well, we shouldn't have.
And that is, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Randall?
They have to ask Joel how that works. Well, so that is some buffer, uh, between the ninety-four and the ninety-six, if we were to go, evolve.
Where is Nelson at?
Nelson is in Naperville, Illinois.
That's why it shouldn't be so much.
On other concrete.
All right, any other questions or discussions? There you go, all those in favor, simply by saying aye?
Aye.
Those, nay, motion carries.
Right, yeah, the, our second bid is from Saint Troy Recreation, they are in Stillwater, but the product comes from elsewhere. Um, they do not carry the, uh, concrete, uh, concrete ash receptacle, so that's why we went up with Nelson. Um, they have provided us a bid, uh, for both, of regular grill and the inaccessible, yeah, yeah, grill. So, bid number, uh, estimate number seventy-fourty-nine is for regular grills, the two color grills at Nowland Park, have open grills at Twin Lakes. They did also include, um, right, and so that's not part, because they originally did bid that. Um, one of the two bids have an accessible swivel shelf for the two of them, the two grills in Nowland Park, but when I talked to Eric, um, he said it says not to have any accessory like that. So, we won't have to, anyway, so we will, there'd be no swivel arms on, they will be just in there now. So.
So, both covered grills, giving, uh, both covered grills in Memorial Park?
That's what I was told by.
What's the purpose of covered versus uncovered?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Randall?
I would assume that that's, probably been all these years. When we replace things at Twin Lakes, we replace what was there, um.
The one there, it was Twin Lakes, and the one was covered, one wasn't.
I, and I'm just saying that, I, I don't know why the ones at Nowland Memorial were covered, they are now, and that's. And then the ones that, in Twin Lakes, are uncovered, and they would be, I see.
Councilmember Randall, or, oh.
I know that with my family and our drilling, sometimes we prefer a covered grill because we are doing something that's bigger for a family, so it's more of a roasting, baking, um, and we're doing a whole meal, rather than, um, just fryings. So, that may be why the difference in covered versus uncovered, um, that's the only thing I can think of.
Yeah, I just, I just remembered that in Memorial Park, we had one uncovered, one covered. I don't know why any covered down at the lake's, but it's bigger logic. If we have ten of them down at the lake's park, you think, somebody down there would probably, they want to cover these well. But and, uh, six hundred and forty versus a hundred and ninety-seven, that's, that's a lot of difference. And this doesn't come with no, this comes with no coast. Says multi-level grill, uh, steel coast for standard embedded mount. These two bays, covered grill, no coast, with locking. One, one was to go on usually show. That show, Eric was saying, we don't need a vault.
And, and that's only on the seventy fifty. We have the seventy.
I was just reading out seventy forty-nine.
Our J T D C, twenty-six S two.
The question, do we want to go with all uncovered, that, uh, actually, uh, smaller rate than the covers, and then they're all uniform? And then do we want to go with the ADA, versus the non-ADA?
So which is, which is the ADA?
The ADA is seventy fifty. So it's seventy fifty?
Oh, that's the two forty-eight?
Yes.
Right now, on our picking tables, we have some ADA and some standard, pretty bad. I don't know about. Twin Lakes, I know Memorial Park for sure.
Mr. Mayor, I have not looked at. Any of the picking tables in Ravens City.
I was saying. And I know whenever we have an event in Twin Lakes, there are ADA tables and I mean, I mean, it's more of a. I've been around Twin Lakes to know enough. I'm assuming. We have that soon. Yeah, not knowing where they're going, if they're. ADA tables. It'd be nice to be the. Rules.
And, and Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Reagan.
I I'm not an attorney and I'm not fully uh. Fully aware of all the ADA rules, but I don't believe. You can, if somebody, if somebody calls, calls in and wants to rent a. Location, rent a pavilion with a, with a grill, we're. Able to say, are you, you need ADA accessible? I don't know about that, so by having them call. ADA accessible, they're available to them. And you don't have to worry about. How to. Properly ask that question so people can understand. They're available in a grill. So would be my, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Reagan.
Would be my preference to go with the ADA. And. Not with the swivel shell. We want twelve of them and the marshal would be again. Um up to twelve, well, not, maybe we'll do twelve.
On, on the quote estimate seventy forty nine and seventy fifty, state contract. Ones of eighty nine sixteen, ones of eighty nine sixty two.
And that's a percentage, I'm assuming that's a percentage of the total bid and one bit is different. Multiple down. They're both using the same rate, zero point zero four. But because of the, I I believe the dollar one is, is why that's it.
So at seventy fifty, we just don't have the. And then we have the. Hot coal bin. And no covered. No covered grills. See, we have one that has what we want on.
What do you mean?
Zach.
But I don't, I don't know what you.
Okay, so, so I'm seventy fifty. You might. I don't see covered grill, no coast with locking. RJTC twenty six slash S two. I don't see that on the bid seventy fifty. And see. Accessible, ADA accessible embedded post mounted grill with soil top. Great. And a two forty eight hot coal bin, which we don't want. Anchor kit for hot coal bin, which we don't want. ADA accessible grill with standard embedded coast. I don't know how. Get birds from the first one. And thirty bucks more. And soil shelf accessible for those that should. I think we said we don't want. And I was getting covered, unless. Being scratched on, on Saint Troy, no matter what, we can scratch the coal bin, right?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Flattball.
With these. Are we considering ordering or having someone do the mason work, or is that something that will be done in the house? Around the.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Scott.
So we haven't debated determination exactly which we were involved in. It was a suggestion that we could take a look at it. If it was something we were going to do, we'd probably.
Okay.
The other thing that you, I mean, Mr. Mayor. I know we have guests here and the public hearing started inside of the bug. I didn't realize that grills is gonna take forty five minutes, but. Yeah, we want to still continue that. Is there any way we can? Have this conversation after the public hearing and finalize the rules. That's what we need to do so we don't cut these folks short before the public hearing starts to be able to do everything.
Yeah, it's a pretty big presentation, so. I I just, I, oh, and it's, I I apologize, but. But we're trying to figure out information you just got tonight and. And I don't know where they're going and.
We can figure out where they're going.
So, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Bryan. Won't, I'll make a motion to disable this until um discussion after the public hearing. And that, that time you can either get more information or table it further. Okay, I'll save that motion. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Reagan.
I I would ask that we. Approve the purchase of twelve grills. To per city, to for Malton Park. Well, and for Twin Lakes. Would be appropriate. Connecting equipment that we need. I've not ever bought a grill, so this is French to me, you know, who knows, but. Uh that we have a cook, cooking piping, things like that, um for not to exceed. Dollar amount like we did with the hot ashtrays and that. Um. Would then provide the actual cost back to us. To show that we've not done any two C.
And I. I guess I'd like to know if they're providing the hundred and ninety seven ones and two hundred and forty eight ones, now ones, but. And. And if we're buying covered ones. I don't know what that not to exceed price is because in the line has covered one dozen, and they're the same. Twelve fifty bucks difference on total costs. I I like the motions on the table to the table and let's finish the discussion because we're down half an hour now to see. Really big bag. I'm sitting, this meeting was really scheduled for. It's like, I'm never a fan of projects for things and I'm. Meeting like this, but. Um we have a motion table, so that will be. Assessing to. Any other discussions? And there you go. All of the favor that motion, could signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those.
Nay.
Nay. Right? And that motion.
Who made?
Councilmember Reagan. It's not bad.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Reagan.
I would mo, that the town vote approved. We can start estimate number seven, there'd be. ADA accessible. Grills. That are not. So it would be twelve of both top ones. To two hundred and forty eight dollars. If necessary. Anchor kit. At ten dollars a piece if needed.
An anchor kit is for hot coal bins.
Okay, then we won't need it. But the next um. That would be the two forty eight times twelve.
So that's three minutes. And then we'll take two four about.
Yep. I'll second.
Was that included shipping?
Yep. Shipping total was four eighty five, and that was with the hot ashtrays, so it would be less than.
And so, forty five hundred? Who you shipping? I will see that for a five million twelve dollar. Zach.
Got it. And again, if we don't do this inventory and we find out it's a lot in this deal, we'll adjust.
Motion here.
Yeah.
Motion in the second. Motion by Councilmember Reagan, secondly, Councilmember Flattball. Any other discussion? Saying and hearing now, all those in favor, say goodbye and say aye.
Aye.
Those, nay, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
I know, it's just not odd, I didn't know. I think being in the car can always.
Okay, more.
Yeah.
Off and running. Thirty minutes, can you do it?
No, 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 no. Uh Mayor, Councilmember Scott, and then, thank you so much for allowing us to come in here and give us a sort of presentation. I've got a lot of slides. I'm not gonna read every single one. Um because I'm gonna set the time. Um hey. If there's any questions, I'd like this to be more of a conversation and both of you just kind of give you information, so please speak up with any questions. Um here too, and I'm John Wost, I'll be doing the, the road readings. And I have me, Tara, she'll be doing the, the MS four presentations. We've got enough time, I know my efficient. Um why? Why perform a road inventory? Um if there's a number of reasons. And I think the biggest one is, it's essential of your larger asset that they said, and to know what it is out there. Um provide graphical description of, of the road's surface conditions. Um allows council to develop a plan and budget for improvements. Um once that's done, we'll look at the, the types of projects and give some estimates. And then what, once we're done with that, we'll come back and say, okay, talk to the projects and then get prior to what does the council want to do? And then from there, it allows you to be very prepared for grant funding and information back and forth to, to residents. Understanding road pavements, um not gonna go through all these, and what is asphalt, what is gravel, uh topical failures and, and, and the rest.
I mean, in your first slide there, each kind of identifying projects for grant level funding. I know you're gonna give that some later than. In fact.
Yes.
But that's something we haven't had assistance over the past, so. And we've had discussions. Previous company. And that's something that, that there are staff available. To aggressively pursue this because.
One, one hundred percent, we actually.
Armani's a great one.
Okay, absolutely, absolutely. And, and, you know. A little bit of background on more, I guess I'll digress a little bit. We were built as a company all time helping assisting small. You know, we're, I think, city engineers for. Um sixty ish in, in Minnesota, ninety, almost a hundred in North Dakota. This is what we do, and this is what we do well. We actually have a funding specialist, and there's actually a flyer in, in the um. Um folder that I sent you, Josh. And then that's what he does. He monitors, we, we have meetings every month to talk about what's coming up and how to do that. And what this allows us to do is figure out what the projects are and really be selective in, in where we think they would fit best. Sit down and talk with you, you all, and say, okay, I think, you know, this pot, the LRIP, I think you did one a couple of years ago. In, in small cities and in different ways to, to, to go out and aggressively fight for some money to get this stuff out, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure. What is asphalt? Everybody drives on asphalt, everybody sees it. Um asphalt is.
Sorry, I cut you off in the next slide, so.
No, okay.
Yeah, the gravel road failures, I mean, that's something that. If in the past, I road study, you, you seen our previous road, we've looked through the studies. There was some talk of gravel, and there was some talk of ditching, which. And that's brown, men's look. And, and I know we're looking at an asphalt pavement, but we also have. Almost half our roads are, are still gravel and we're not looking at turning them back to. Turning into two minutes at this point, at least we haven't had any pressure doing that. Um but we do want to know what's, what's best. As far as maintaining, what we do have. The ditching that's appropriate for that, and then any treatments for dust control, the aggressive types of treatment for dust control. And we can topically apply or mix in as we do, is that something? That more has experienced with also.
Yes. It do, we do, I mean, and me personally, um. When I was in Arizona, I was with American County, I had two thousand five hundred seventy miles of roads, about thirteen were brown. Um we had, I had. Um ten road graders and we were ten thousand square miles at this account. And so they were remotely, and that's all I did was, was break the roads. Um and we did, we were in a PM ten now compliance, so we had to be very careful of the dust. In the dust, go figure. Um so we can, we have a, there's a variety of different ways to do, one, you can water them, that obviously evaporates very quickly. And there, there's a couple of different ways. I can go through those, I've got a couple of slides on that as well, but there are several options to, to help with those gravel roads. And keep it in gravel, you know, use some topical or some, some um mixing of, of other materials or put something on top of it.
Thank you.
I need my name, Mr. Mayor. I knew the council was interested in the ground roads, so we talked to John and everybody at his presentation. And I think it can come a slightly less even address gravel means there, but it's certainly part of the package and we've been talking, absolutely on purpose, yes. Yeah. So asphalt is what we call a flexible pavement. What goes on underneath the asphalt will eventually reflect and you'll see it on the surface of the asphalt. Um and concrete is considered rigid because it spans a lot of defluence. Um ingredients basically is a hot uh oil binder and an agent, and it's basically what the wet asphalt is. Um it needs a strong base. Whatever happens underneath, like I said, will reflect up, so the key with asphalt was to make sure you have a solid base. And in to, to shed the water, because the water kills, that's where we get potholes, we put our freestyle and everything else. Um okay, asphalt pavement, asphalt pavement failures. It. Fail, it deteriorates over time for a variety of reasons. Environmental, maybe weathering, again, our freestyle cycle and aging, just getting old. Um the sun evaporates the oils and then it starts kind of tumbling of the asphalt itself. As well as structural, with the subbase, if, if there's a soft spot or if water gets in there and it freestalls, and that's where we get our potholes. As well as traffic books, you know, you need to know your traffic and. You do through the, the geotechnical evaluation, you figure out what your, your section is between the asphalt, the classified and the subbase. So it lasts a typically a twenty year design cycle. And then, and there's difference defects with, with running and cracking and everything else on asphalt. This is just a picture of the typical asphalt failures, you know, your potholes, your graveling. Um alligator cracking and then block cracking, again, as, as everything kind of reflects up through, through the asphalt from the, the base. Gravel roads are considered flexible pavement, so again, anything underneath the gravel is what's gonna happen to the surface of the gravel. Um they have many similar distresses than asphalt, such as potholes and running, but they have also unique, you know, washboarding is probably the worst and. And if it doesn't drain and dust, they're probably the two biggest ones. And if it doesn't drain, the water will eventually seep into the, the gravel road. That's where you're gonna get your mucky spots, your, your soft spots. And you're gonna want to deal with that with drainage or with uh replacing that, that material. I'm going gravel road maintenance, so like I said, um you, it's. All roads requirements to some extent, um to extend, they're, they're paid a lot, but gravel roads is much more frequent. Uh after just about every ring of that and, and a road with decent volume, you're gonna get your washboard. And you're gonna get your rubber. So the blading and the watering are kind of ongoing gravel road maintenance. Um new, adding new material to, to build up that crown to get rid of those spots. It's again, something that, that regularly goes on with gravel roads. Now, Mayor, you mentioned kind of converting gravel roads to pavement. That is again, after we go through this process, the discussion to have. Is that something that the council is interested in? If so, not all gravel roads are good candidates to, to be converted to asphalt. Again, it kind of depends. On the drainage and the structure and everything else and, and, you know, if, if that's becomes a priority, then we'll discuss about that.
And the driveway that went back and the farmway back there is not only a good candidate necessarily.
We'll have to take a look at it. Actually, tonight would be a really good thing to go look at. So this, um, this is a pavement, pavement condition index PCI is kind of the. The way you rate a gravel road. And, and, and what's done is you. You walk or drive the road and you see what the surface looks like and, and what kind of distresses, whether they're added or cracking, patching, or anything else. That curve in red, uh a roadway design is typically twenty years. The curve in red you can see kind of goes down from the bottom towards, you know, thirteen or fourteen years. Um and that's. You, you, as soon as it quote unquote fails, you let it go for a while because it's so expensive, so let's kind of get. And that's, you, as soon as it quote-unquote fails, you let it go for a while because it's so expensive, so let's kind of get your twenty years, so. At the end of twenty years, you really, really need to rebuild the road. What's important about this graph is, the first third of the curve is pavement maintenance. That's where you do your crack sealing and light pavement maintenance, that's really cheap, or relatively cheap. The middle of the graph is really a steep curve, because after you get, after your asphalt gets to a point, it starts to degrade very, very quickly. And that becomes kind of your rehabilitation, your millin' overlays, and your replays, and at the very end, is a full-blown reconstruction, and afterward, it's very, very expensive. Typical options for maintenance, the crack sealing, the seal coating, and the micro-surfacing. This is, in essence, painting a cracked wall. So, again, everything will reflect back up through all of these, but what these do is really, it eliminates or helps reduce the water getting into the asphalt and into the suburbs. It as well is particularly the steel coating, the chip steel, the micro-surfacing, protect the surface, because the sun does bake out the oil, so it regenerates the oils and keeps it a little bit fresher. They fade quickly, and it still becomes the old road, but it does keep us from that. Rehabilitation is millin' overlays, full depth and partial depth asphalt reclamation, where you basically grind down, if you've got four inches of asphalt, plus you grind down another four or five inches of the class five. And you mix all that together, and that becomes your new base and new pavement. Sometimes you've got curb and gutter, you've got to remove some material, or you get too steep of a crown. But that's a very good, that's one of my favorite things to do as per the floors, not if they get bad. And then, the full, complete reconstruction, where you're doing utilities and curb and gutter, sidewalks, everything. So, the process, the determining appropriate treatments, the visual evaluation of the surface. We would walk and drive every road in, and now then, and take notes and take pictures, and start categorizing what didn't look good. Know the environment, know the track, know the drainage, know the soils, and what the groundwater is doing, and then understand the cause. Yes, Mr.?
Two minutes and done?
Yes. Of understanding the causes, you know, try to avoid temporary fixes. If at least, if you've got a complete failure, a temporary fix will, maybe putting cold mix out in a path on the pothole would be good, but doing that little patch when everything else is trash doesn't make no sense. And then, a, all of this is surface evaluations. So, once we get into the priorities, then we would bring a geotech onboard, probably go ahead a couple of years, and have them look at those three projects maybe for the next three years, and see what needs to be done, just so we don't have to do one, again, we've got several options, on what their recommendation is, whether it's a millin' overlay, whether it's a reclamation, or whether it's a complete reconstruction, and then what that section is, what has to be happening, what kind of materials and soils are in the thing. And this is where we would conduct a little construction, this is kind of the mission of that. My preference is always to view it system-wide. That way, you can kind of compare and contrast, come up with those priorities, and make a plan going forward on what the council and the city wants to do. The PCI, the pavement condition index is what everything is based on. The traditional, kind of the Cadillac of PCI, is based on one versus a hundred. I think, if I remember correctly, I was actually training with the Washington State DOT in my early career. I think there's twelve or thirteen different conditions that you look at and you measure, and then you give a hundred and twenty page report. A Pacer Regal was something, I believe, Michigan State or University of Michigan developed, and it's a little abbreviated. It still has all the information, but you're not getting into the minutia of details. What we do, and I found it has worked very, very well, is just a GIS-based graphical representation. We still go out, we look at every road, we look at all the distresses, and then we kind of glomp that into one to three versus one to a hundred. So, green would be a good road, a wobba-lease crack ceiling, or fog ceiling, or a microsurface. That's typically a road, and that's less than ten years. A yellow would be, maybe it needs some patching, will be close to beginning to needing a millin' overlay, and that becomes kind of that middle section. The red roads are either completely failed, or very close to being failing. That would be a deeper millin' overlay, like full millin' overlay, or reclamation, or full reconstruction. And then, we do is we put that on a map, and we come back and we have those discussions. It's not only the surface of the asphalt, there is underground utilities, drainage, and everything else that needs to be looked at. And then, once we, we typically, if there's a section that does, that has curb and gutter, initially, we will probably add like a five or ten percent replacement of a patching of curb and gutter. And until we say this is our priority, then we'll go out and actually measure, you know, if there's sidewalks that needs to be replaced, and everything else.
Sidewalks and alleys are relatively pure now then.
Ironically, though, they have just about the same level of effort for a sidewalk as a road, but you don't have nearly as much funding for a real sidewalk as a road. So, it's nice to have pure sidewalks on.
Ours is, in some part, maybe, is we have trails.
Yes.
And we talked about, we've been a part of trail planning. So, we all certain developments, and talk about sidewalks, we've got, put in trail and say, because most people can still walk on a bike on streets.
Sure. And asphalt pavement condition of their asphalt trails is directly, you know, we could do the exact same thing on trails, in the development as well. So, once we, once we walk the roads and develop a map, we would, we would kind of group those into ready, agree, and whether it's maintenance, repairs, or reconstruction.
I can stop and ask a question, Scott. When you guys were talking, does this include, I know we're already looking at Tom Lake's part, we have Morton Farm Reserve, we have a park, parking lot area. Does this cover other city stuff other than public streets? Any tumors, services that were responsible for?
We did not get in the park.
I mean, right now, it's kind of concentrating on roads, and then, you know, whether you want cars.
We need a way to figure into it.
Yeah. So, we would develop that conditions map and initial kind of preliminary project costs. Then, we would come back to council and review what we did, the map that we have, make sure that there's agreements, and we kind of go over the product costs, and then have a discussion about projects. What did the council want to do? Some councils want to fix the worst roads first, but that's a lot of capital out. So, what I like to do is develop a pavement maintenance program, and then develop a CIP for the next five or ten years on these roads for priorities. That way, again, we can plan, we can look for funding, and we have a defendable plan, and we can communicate with residents, and say, here's what we're doing. We're looking at it, and we've got a plan on how to get that done. And then, they change every year to, you know, depending on conditions, or traffic increases, and things like that. And then, another thing that we do is we also have a CIP program that is web-based. And I can sit here, at a work session, pull up the CIP, and then we can talk to that project. It's not just a spreadsheet that comes around everybody's seat. You can say, okay, let's, what if me, you know, apply for a half a million dollar grant on this project? Let's say, let's assume we get that. What does that, how does that free up, and where can we put that different money? And we can have those real-time conversations on that. And again, in my experience, at least, of better communications with citizens, and you can communicate that point on what we do. And there, I would recommend either a public carrier or a lease to have citizen input on that as well. Again, here's kind of back to that curve, and this is just, you know, pavement preservation is maybe, and these are old numbers, but the big thing to take away with this is that between a good road with pavement preservation and a failed road with reconstruction, it can be ten, twenty times most notable to reconstruct the road than preserve the road. And in the graph on the right, is every three to five years, you have a pavement preservation activity. And what that does is that bumps up the road rating a little bit, and that extends that life of that road. So, design life would be twenty years. If we could do a good rotation of pavement maintenance, maybe that becomes thirty or thirty-five years before you have to reconstruct that road, as well to ten, you know, fifteen or twenty. This is, we've just finished rerating the roads for the seed, Hector. They've got eight miles.
Ken?
Yes.
Can I cut you short with Hector and St. Augusta?
Yeah.
Would they get ten minutes?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, I think that the key things for the council to know of what you just presented, and obviously, the dollars and the timeline.
Yeah, yeah. So, I just, quick takeaway, so, Hector is eight miles, their five-year cycle is about a million miles, or a million dollars to a year. St. Augusta has about twenty-five miles, their five-year cycle is about two and a half million per year. You have sixty-one miles of total roads, this is concentrating on asphalt roads, which is thirty-six miles of paved roads. You know, extrapolate that, well, what's the cost of reconstructing that versus, you know, kicking that pan down the road a little bit, quickly? You know, long-term plan. There are things not to do, that's in your, in your packet, in the slides. I was trying to do this, as you talked a little bit. Sorry, I didn't do that. The overall cost of that, is about twenty-one thousand dollars, to get that done. Based on the, and that cost was initially, it wasn't updated, so that is to get out there and rent your asphalt roads, do the map, and get, come up with those initial costs for the project.
So, this is just for asphalt?
Yes, yeah, and we can certainly, whether you want to do it at the same time, you know, I can, you know, take a look at that, and what happens for us to go out, and do the asphalt roads, maybe it's just a existing condition, and a little bit lighter of a kind of recommendations. We, I can certainly take a look at that and see what that nice, that I like.
Have we not already had road studies done on each asphalt road that we even do?
Yes. We have an existing road study, in that, and there was a, you know, a cost estimated at the time, it's been updated at least twice. Joe and Shane did it, probably the first two times together, I think Joe's been updating it since then, I don't think Shane's, you know, Shane's looked at it again recently?
Not mine. When was the most recent one that you gave your thought? Because I, I don't have one copy in my office.
It was one when?
Twenty fifteen, that date on August?
Frankie, something when we started, I saw. I don't know when Joe, I'm going to guess it probably was twenty fifteen, Joe last week, but. That was going to be my question. This is valuable, we actually use it. We've had a road plan for years, and it hasn't factored into our capital improvement plan. Keep saying, okay, how does this factor in? And we, the value of paying for something like this is you have a focus, because we've had the road studies, and they've updated. But then, we had these theories on, as you were saying, originally was which roads are worse? And let's pay attention to those, and then joking, why, why do we let them get so bad? Why do we start doing more preventative, so they don't all get to the rebuild state? And we just don't have a working philosophy of what is the long-term plan? And that's why we wanted to have this discussion before we finish our capital plan, because we're going into capital plan, and this could change everything we're doing. Why is that a five-year plan and say, that doesn't match our road needs at all? And understanding, but I will ask the question, this is for asphalt only. We do need an understanding works of the gravel roads and our ditching, that makes those gravel roads maintain. So, we would, we would need to know what that conditional cost would be. But if we have this, obviously, you know, this might have been, we have to use it.
Yeah. Those couple of slides that we went over, I really liked those slides, because they color-coded, you know, they said?
Yeah.
They color-coded, they can move. When we were in there, you can change the going on the fly, and whatever we're doing, and then it has a list of what the cost will do, that road is done aside at today's prices, and kind of prioritize. I really liked that piece of it, so we were going to sit down and budget for something. We have a template to work on.
And it's nice that it's, it's a web-based, so we can update it, as you say, current, as opposed to eight years ago, when we did this plan, these were current, and that's got nothing to do with current.
I agree.
That's fair. Councilman Flattball?
So, I have a question, as far as we have some issues with our gravel roads.
Right.
Is that something that, and Scott, you may be familiar with this as well, dealing with the guys? Is that something that, I mean, we have more gravel roads than we do asphalt?
There is.
There is, we do have more asphalt than we do?
There is twelve.
Oh? There's twelve? I thought that was why?
I think it's thirty-one blacked out and twenty-six bad.
This was the number that I was going to say.
Okay.
And it counted.
Me, wow, I missed that.
And it also counted relatively, eventually, some of them will be turned back.
Yes.
Okay. I was just wondering, yeah, okay, then, my half, my question is actually.
So, additional task, gravel road assessments adds additional costs. Developing GIS-based capital improvement plan, you talked about this big web basis, add additional costs?
The GIS, I mean, I'm going to build this in our GIS system. And I will, I'd want to give you access to this, so that's all kind of built into that.
So, developing a GIS-based capital improvement plan.
The capital improvement plan is going to be set up, so this is the road ratings map.
So, then? And add it on the web-based?
Yes, so that would be a layer to the GIS. And then, we have GIS, and we have the CIP plan, that is, I can come up here, and I can, you know, ask your questions on the fly, and then we can do that too. And that's something that, being an operations-minded, you know, person from my public life, that is probably one of the most exciting things that we do. Sorry. Yeah.
And then, the project funding grant, it's additional costs.
I mean, if we're doing all this stuff, we've got the information on the projects, some of the, it, it depends. If the simpler grants, you know, we're just going to do that as part of our, our project, for the project. Some of them, like a, a state across the school, and others, some of the federal grants take a lot more than some of the states, in small cities, local improvement grants. So, generally, yes, we will Google grants, but if it's a, if we identify a, a good project that has a lot of components, and it takes a little bit more in-depth to do the grant, then that's something we'd sit down, as we identify grants for the project, say, it's this grant, this grant, and this grant, you know, these grants, these two grants are relatively easy. This one's going to take a little bit more effort, it might be a thousand dollars, it might be five thousand dollars, or whatever it is. But that's, that is something that I will be, come here and clearly have that discussion with the council.
And your past experience on those grants, and cost, usually wrapped into the grant?
Do you have any to that?
What's that?
You okay?
Yeah, typically not, but yeah.
So, I, I manage a lot of our money, that we do, especially through Minnesota's buying, I'm jockeying, I would put my credit on that. And what's interesting about the laws is, right now, there's a lot of money out there that can help cities. There's actually this fund out there right now for helping them assist frame grants. So, there's a pot of money out there just to write, and then there's a pot of money out there to work, that can be added into the grants, as you're talking, like, the grants, mostly, there's money in there to put the application and all that together. That's kind of on the city, well, more probably would go, but then, the actual, like, creation of that grant, that will be. So, there's a lot of money that aside, put in those help results, so you don't have the fun, the process of that.
You know, with the support, the leads offering, right?
Yeah.
And then, we can move on from that, I was just going to say, do we have any examples of successful grant?
Yes.
And you can provide us, here's all the events, personally?
Yes, I don't think I included in yours, I may have included in that, but I will email Scott, saying, we've got a funding list that has a list of grants that we've done, it's, it's going to be ten, if not hundreds of millions of dollars. Ten to nine hundred million dollars, so grants of six, six to a billion.
Alright, so we're quarter two, this is sending about end time. Um. I mean, we're gonna have people start walking here next to me, having that MS four. How do we all handle this?
Did you get, Mr. Mayor?
I'll remember, right now.
I would note that we authorize Mayor and the council. Um and our city administrator, we can turn the contract of the land generic for twenty twenty, we will, we'll study. For the second, I can see today.
And Mayor, you're on a magic seat on that?
At at this point, no.
Right now, our guest number is twenty-one two.
Good follows. So you'll give your numbers on.
What's this second for? It's a road study. You'll root. Excuse me, road radius, road radius?
There's seven.
Oh, seven. Hey. Miss Morgan, my council radio, second my council dollars. Question probably with Council Brian.
I'm concerned because. I read on here that it talks about additional task options, which I may or may not be wrong, but includes with additional cost. I don't see the amounts for gravel roads, I don't see the amounts for uh CIP. Um. And I really don't think it's a valuable, a valuable exercise to only do the asphalt when we have had. Um issue in the past. Um since I've been on council with with the gravel roads, that if we're investigating that before we enter any sort of agreement to do a road study. I think it would be a better thorough use of our money to include the um gravel at the same time.
Mr. Mayor?
Who's our radio?
The council member, Brian, um I don't disagree with what you're saying. I think right now, under time constraint, we have something that tells us for twenty-one, two, we'll do this. We have a commitment, starting on the combat. City administrator later, with some additional costs for the other things. We can look at both at that time. I I believe at this time, we have staff in place that by having this done. It, we will use um and and where in the past we have, and it's. Also salt and it's lack of um initiative on staff's help. Uh for staff side, I believe now we. We have staff that is in place, that will assist. And and we will benefit and in turn our residents will benefit. Again, back to those additional tasks, tasks, I would like to see those pricing as additional information come back to this format. But not to delay this entirely please. Based on that that's what we go and have places for complete information.
That was a timeline on this, I'm wondering if you see a report.
Um. It would probably, there there is a lot of miles, so probably be. We did the eight hundred and hectare in two days, I'm thinking. Three or four days in the field for to get everything done. Uh to get everything ready, and then coming back and then and. Getting with the GIS tools and developing the map. I would say. The project cost, I think we've got a a pretty good spreadsheet on that. Three, maybe four weeks, and I think we could have. I'll say four weeks, I don't want, I don't want to over. Promise a number to move ourselves, four weeks. I think we can have it done.
Sure, here. Scott. My apologies that we didn't get everything that we didn't get to, and I gave it to the two of you outside of this and. I can see if we can get something on the calendar. So Tara has a lot to reflect on that, and I really wanted to talk about it this morning. And then I can get some of the numbers that you're talking about, and. Um you were going to provide me the document too to be able to work against, so maybe I can pull that all together. And try to get the two of them back on schedule again from you and. And and end of the motion was so, then let's raise you, we're going to start that. For obviously, you know, we were, I've been on. Sorry, we we we. We ran up to, so, and Tara, I'm so sorry that we. Had you here so you could listen to all of it, your presentation, and you were probably all shut off, so.
That was my next stage, try to be in the night.
Yeah. So if you, if if you're okay with them, Mr. Mayor, I can work with them and try to get something to schedule if if that works for all of you.
Right, and erosion is the second, any other discussion? It's unfortunate. Rush to do this thing, this is very important, I have. Um although in favor of the motion. By by saying.
I am.
Close?
Name.
Thanks. Motion here, and I I just do that because I just feel like we brushed it, we had questions, unfortunately, it will be a mal answers. But, and they did the motion here, we we proceed with the asphalt. Only for uh only one to.
Thank you very much, and and any questions, I mean, we we can come back at the end, depending if there's more questions on the gravel asphalt. And obviously, with with the other school discussion, we're done.
I do that.
Yeah.
Okay, right. Now, do you have, like, you've included slides about what you can do for asphalt roads? Do you have separate slides for gravel? Or additional slides, I should say? We talked about typical options to maintain and.
Yes, I I could get some of those slides as well, and and part of the gravel methods to go back over the stuff.
If that would be possible, then Scott can send them off, I'd be. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sorry for. Rush.
Appreciate the time.